Good evening. Now called this uh Planning Commission meeting on this stage July eleventh, twenty twenty four to order. Uh can we get a roll call, please?
Sorry. Jason Dale?
Here.
Laney Quinn?
Here.
Abby Seitz? Here. Randy Rickert?
Here.
Mike Griffiths?
Here.
Um Chris Wright?
Here.
Um and then um. Sorry. Yeah.
Here.
Okay. And did I miss anyone? Oh, sorry, Sharon, Linda Newton-Curtis.
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh before we get to some public comments that are not or for anything not on the agenda tonight, I'd like to get uh Commissioner Seitz for a little announcement for the uh for the commission. Commissioner Seitz, please.
Uh my name is Abby Seitz, and I would like to disclose to the members of the Planning Commission that I am related to a Newburgh of City of Newburgh staff member who assists the Planning Commission. My relationship with the staff member does not present a conflict of interest or bias any of my opinions. I have and will continue to avoid experte contact related to planning commission issues. I have not, nor will I have any discussion of applicants that the Planning Commission are to review.
Thank you, Ms. Seitz, just and that's just for our newest commissioners, so just so they're aware, so she is Bay's daughter. So, yes, okay. Uh that other way every the new commissioners can uh accept and understand which what her statement? Seeing nodding, okay, very good, thank you. Okay, and at this point, I'd like to open the public record for any public comments for items that are not on the agenda tonight. Seeing none here, any anyone on Zoom? No, okay, thank you. Uh at this point, I'd like to open the floor for a motion on the consent calendar for uh the month of for two meetings for the month of June.
Commissioner Wright moves to approve Planning Commission meeting minutes for May first, twenty twenty four, and May ninth, twenty twenty four.
Very well, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Commissioner Quinn, I second that.
Very well, I have a motion in a second, we'll just do a voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any any against, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you. This point, we're moving on to some quasi judicial or a quasi judicial public hearing. And at this point, I'd like to call for abstentions, bias, expertise contact, and objections to jurisdiction. Commissioner Newton-Curtis?
Um I live within five hundred feet of the proposed vacation rental, but it I will not allow that to bias my opinion or vote.
Very well, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Uh this point, we'll move on to the legal announcement, Commissioner Seitz.
ORS one nine seven point seven six three requires certain statements to be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to the approval of the application. The planning staff will list applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or evidence towards the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to criteria. Any issue which might be raised in appeal of this case to the Land Use Board of Appeals must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. The this part of the law is known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you cannot bring it up at the Land Use Board of Appeals. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of the approval in enough detail to allow the local government or agency to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission will grant such requests through continuance or extension of the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Seitz. I am moving on to the staff report.
All right, good evening, planning commissioners. My name is James, the one of the assistant planners with the city, and we will be looking at the staff report for a proposed vacation rental at two fifteen North School Street. Which is a conditional use permit. Um all right, so the applicant tonight is Teresa Drevdahl, um who owns the property along with Dale Drevdahl. And the request is for a conditional use permit approval for an existing single family dwelling as a vacation rental. Location is at two fifteen North School Street, tax lot R thirty-two nineteen AA thirty-three hundred, which is in the R two medium density, medium density residential zoning district. So the applicable criteria that we'll cover tonight are fifteen two twenty-five sixty, the conditional use permit criteria, and fifteen four forty-five three hundred through three fifty, the criteria for vacation rental homes. So the subject property is located just south of the Salem Cultural Center, and that should indicate R two located in the medium density zoning um and it it's within the R two district with some C three central business district to the west, and then the Salem Cultural Center Zone Institutional to the north. The property is served by um city services for public utilities, and there are currently um overhead utilities also serving the property. So getting into the applicable criteria um for the conditional use permit, so fifteen two twenty-five sixty A says that the location, size, design, and operating characteristics are reasonably compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and will have minimal impacts on livability or appropriate development of abutting properties. So the proposed vacation rental is located in an existing single family home with three bedrooms. Um the applicant has submitted a change of use permit um to five bedrooms, which is pending a building official inspection, and we'll talk about that when we get to the um vacation rental standards. There are two offshoot parking spaces located in the driveway to the north, um and the the use is compatible with other similar residential uses, um similar in size and scope to regular rented or owned dwellings. The second conditional use criteria is in sixty B that the location, design, and site planning of the proposed development will provide a convenient and functional living, working, shopping, or civic environment, and will be as attractive as the nature of the use and its location and setting warrants. The subject property is located in north downtown Newburgh, in close proximity to the Salem Cultural Center, George Fox University, and the downtown business district. And again, it's similar in size and scope to a longer term rental, longer than thirty days, or an owner occupied dwelling. The the third criteria for the conditional use permit is that the the proposed development will be consistent with the code. Um again, it's it's compatible and similar to rented or owned dwellings, and we will go through the vacation rental special use standards next. Looking at the fifteen four forty-five three hundred for vacation rental standards, so the house must be a single family dwelling, which the subject property is, it's a single family dwelling located in the R two zoning districts. Um they must be registered with the city's transient lodging tax among along with land use approval and business license, which the applicant has indicated that they will complete. Um and then for the for the vacation rental standards, um the house provides two parking spaces in the north at the driveway. The proposed project uh would have a maximum occupancy of six guests at two per bedroom. And this is a case where um the applicant submitted an application for five bedrooms, but the Yanville County Assessor data indicates that the house has three. So as we discussed, I believe with with the last vacation rental that came before you, um we have looked at at kind of a process for an applicant to update that information with the assessor and um and the process that that we have come to is that the applicant will submit a a change of use permit with the building official, who will then come out and inspect the property to verify smoke alarms, egress windows, um and any other code requirements. Um so this is is the first case that we've had somebody elect to use that pathway and attempt to increase the the bedroom count. Um staff has um discussed that kind of as this process has gone along, it's evolved, and so the the building official went out and inspected, um and then decided that they wanted to see plans um prior to approving that change of use permit. Um so the proposal from staff tonight is to approve the vacation rental with three bedrooms, but then pending that building officials uh review of of plans and a subsequent inspection, it may be increased to five bedrooms. Um going forward, now that this process has been kind of more formalized, we expect that, you know, as people come and apply for vacation rentals, that change of use process will would happen before we we get to this stage, and so this is a a rather unique situation where we could be conditioning that possible increase in the future. But I think um we would expect moving forward to have that wrapped up prior to bringing it to planning commission. Um so having to answer any questions, um it's been a bit of a kind of a convoluted process to get here, uh being the first case, and hopefully as we go forward, that process is a little smoother.
Is this a good time to ask a question?
If yeah.
Uh are you finished with your presentation?
There's there's more, yeah.
Um.
I can wait.
Yeah, let's wait till the end.
Okay, um the applicant indicates that weekly waste collection will occur, and that the premises will not include RVs, tents, or other temporary shelters during rental occupancy. And then um posting, as indicated in the Newburgh Municipal Code, is also conditioned with potential approval. And so staff recommends the commission move to adopt Planning Commission Order twenty twenty-four five with conditions, approving a conditional use permit CUP twenty-three nineteen for a vacation rental home at two fifteen North School Street, Yanville County Tax Lot R thirty-two nineteen AA thirty-three hundred.
Okay, thank you, James. Uh any questions for staff?
Hi, James. Um so are we conditionally approving three bedrooms with six occupants or five bedrooms with ten?
So as we've we've written the recommended conditions, um the approval is for six occupants and and three bedrooms, but pending an approval um that they that they could increase that, so um if the building official goes and says, oh, oh, I only see four bedrooms, then that would be eight, so kind of giving a little bit of flexibility in that inspection process, but at a baseline tonight, matching what the assessor data says.
So would that come back in front of us again if it if it's approved that it's four or five bedrooms, or is it that we're approving three bedrooms, but if the assessor says five, then it automates to ten occupants?
Yeah, so kind of so how how we um discussed for this case is that the conditions are written to approve as three, possibly up to five pending that building official um inspection, uh which I think I as we've discussed at at the staff level, kind of seeing that as more of a unique case, given some changes in kind of what we expected to see between planning and building as the applicant submitted documentation for that, moving forward, we wouldn't see that kind of sliding scale anymore. This is more just a test case that the applicant has worked with us to. Do you mind if I? Yeah.
So and to add to that, so if you were to look at Exhibit B of the staff report, specifically Condition four A, the way that it's written is that tonight's approval would approve at that three bedroom, six person occupancy, so that's what they are currently allowed. But they have requested a five unit, and they've also submitted to the building department a change of use that allows that building official to make that inspection and verify that things are really the things that will be used as bedrooms are in fact bedrooms. So um we've conditioned it so that they have the ability to do that, since that was what they asked for, but they do not currently meet it. So that that's how this is written, and your planning commission can decide if that sounds acceptable to you. We understand that it's unusual, it's why James wanted to highlight that for the commission. Uh but at the same time, we wanted to respect the wishes of the applicant and hear them, and because they're trying to do the legwork with the building official. It is unusual, and that's the sort of thing that sometimes your planning commission has to kind of grapple with and decide how you feel about it. But this is what we think seemed fair and seemed to meet the criteria.
But moving forward, you would tell an applicant uh they have to first get the building official's approval. We're not going to see another one of these sliding scale pending building approval, is that correct?
We would prefer not to. If we extend it to this individual, we probably need to expect that we would perhaps have to do that. But we made it known to this individual, they've submitted the application. I would say that this this time has taken longer than expected because they were the first one. So they've done the things they've been asked to do, they've cooperated with staff thus far. Um they've submitted plans and done those things for the change of use, so I think that they've been forthcoming in trying to suss this out, so we would certainly hope not, because we'd rather have it locked in when we get here. But if someone needed that, and it seemed, again, to meet the criteria and be kind of an appropriate and proportional way of doing things, we would consider this, because we've done it also, because we've done it here, and we think it's fair. Uh so I can't say that it won't come back, but we would prefer that it not, we would much rather it be not a squishy condition of approval, we would rather have it be a firm one. But this one does set a criteria, you are here, and if you meet the requirements of the building official, you could be here.
So just to be clear, we're really approving five bedrooms with ten occupants contingent upon approval from the assessor?
City's building official. It has to do with it has to do with safety standards associated with the buildings and what they would be used, or the rooms and the structure and what they'd be used for.
Any further questions? I have one question, so just to make sure that there's, so if it if we are looking at five uh five bedrooms with ten occupants, it doesn't run afoul of any parking restrictions or um occupancy standards that way, or, you know, any any of those kinds of things. It's not something that somebody, if would they were to be applying for five, they would need a variance for, say.
Um also, for the um vacation rental standard, it's two spaces a across the board, kind of what what this process ha has been seeking to address is, kind of we, as we 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 process some of these applications, um somebody will submit and think, oh, I have four bedrooms, but then we'll go and check the assessor data, and then it says, oh, I only have two or three, and so um it doesn't affect the vacation rental standards themselves, but more just kind of reconciling the county data versus an applicant kind of what they think is in their house.
Okay, okay.
This is that process that building official works with planning to. Get going.
Thank you.
Chris Wright has a question on Zoom.
Go ahead, Chris.
Um according to Newburgh Municipal Code, um for short term rentals, the order expires one year upon if approved. If the applicant doesn't commence use of the home as a vacation rental, unless an extension is granted per Newburgh Municipal Code fifteen point two-two-five point one hundred. My question is, how is this policed? If the short term rental goes with the land or property deed, is it put on the deed right away? Or is it a year grace time before it's put on the deed? How does that work?
So Commissioner Wright, the volume coming into the room, just so you know, is a little light. That could be on our end, because we're having some tech issues, but I'll try and answer your question fully. Um so the conditional use permits do run with the land, it does not get applied to the deed or anything like that, it's just that it's assigned to the property, not to the operator. So it is something that applies. We typically do track when these are effectuated, so that's done typically through the TLT registration and the business license registrations. And so if someone were to attempt to effectuate, if we were aware that something had been expired and they go to register um for a business license or a TLT registration, and staff determine, staff looks at it and sees that they had a permit, but it's more than a year old, and it's been marked expired, then we wouldn't uh they wouldn't be able to basically use that permit, they would have to apply for a new one, because it would have expired already. So we use the TLTs and business li, or the TLT transient lodging tax registrations and the business license registrations to determine whether or not something's been effectuated. Does that answer your question? Or are there other parts to the question?
Um I was just wondering how long it actually takes to go on the uh or be attached to the property. Um it's just something, I guess, I uh if uh I'm I'm wondering just how long it takes for uh, is it immediately that it goes? If they turned around and sold the property, say tomorrow, would it, and it was approved by this commission, would it go with the property?
It would, it would go with the property, that is correct, so this, it's a conditional use permit, and conditional permits run with the land. As opposed to.
Okay. That clarifies it, thank you very much, Clay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, following up on Chrissy's question. Um if it goes with the land, is that an indefinite period of time, so it could go on in perpetuity?
That is our understanding, we've we've spoken with the city's attorney within the last year about this, because it did seem it's a conditional use permit, and there's no expiration for it, so in perpetuity is essentially how it runs. If the city chose to enforce in a certain way, there are certain provisions where we could say it's inactive for a certain period of time, that vested interest could lapse, but the city would really have to kind of determine what that is, because it's relatively unclear based on the conversations with our city attorney. So for the most part, we would say that it runs with the land, it stays with the land.
I continue to have concerns about livability, you know, with the criteria of fifteen point two-two-five point zero-six-zero and the density of vacation homes within this particular area. I continue to have issues in the way the code is worded that it implies a minimal impact on livability in the area. You know, when I think about a neighborhood, it means neighbors. Neighbors mean that you're there for a certain period of time, whether you like them or not. I understand that the way the code is written as a planning commission, we don't have much choice. But I just want to make the statement that I believe something needs to be done about the density of houses that are considered in perpetuity to be um.
Sure. Um I think one thing I might add, and we didn't include it in the presentation, because it doesn't um apply to the uh cr- criteria, and therefore isn't binding in the approval. The applicant did indicate that it is the permanent residence, and so that they're intending for a a shorter time period per year, and so, you know, again, that's not in in our review, but the applicant may speak to that, I don't you know, just they they might have additional comments outside of our review of the criteria.
Yeah, and I understand that. I think another one of my concerns is that follow up on applicant applicants meeting the conditions appears to be very loose, and that is a concern of mine. And I understand that, you know, the ten months or whatever it was that the applicant said that they were going to be living in the house isn't a condition of of our approval, but I just want to make that statement.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions for staff?
Yes. Commissioner Wright, I was wondering if the alley that is behind the house is used by the library at all? And if uh they are allowed to have any parking back there in the future?
Well, I I I think I may ask the applicant to speak to that, that that didn't come up in our review of the application materials um or any daring comments in referral.
Okay.
I couldn't hear the question.
Um I believe what Chris Wright was saying, Chris, yell at me a little louder, if I'm incorrect, you're saying if they want access to the parking in the library facility just behind the property, is that was that your inquiry?
Um yes, I'm wondering if the library uses that alleyway, and if they've asked if they can have permission, or if anybody can park back there randomly, if that's also available for parking.
This this is Commissioner Quinn, so I frequent the library, and those typically are two hour limit spots regardless of residency, so I don't think that has any bearing on this particular portion of the subject matter at hand, but two, there is actually a lot of street parking on both sides of the street um surrounding the community center as well, so if there were to ever be a sliding scale, which it sounds like we're discussing this evening, and the fact that this could be five or ten different occupants in the house at any given time, it actually seems like almost an optimal spot, because it is partly um not residential, but like in industrial, um was the R two. Sorry, I lost my spot, but it actually seems like if we had to do a sliding scale, that that almost seems like a better spot that we had to agree with that on, being that they were very forthcoming, as Clay pointed out, and that they have gone through the proper channels and have been very helpful in meeting the criteria, that actually seems like an amenable spot to make that adjustment that we might not otherwise be as comfortable with.
Yeah, I agree, Commissioner Quinn. The uh I was just curious if that is used as a route. Um no, I looked at some aerial photographs and some other things, and yes, there is ample parking, definitely. Um regardless of a sliding scale, and we also do have in our codes about the option of inspection for an additional rooms. I know that's come up before in a couple of ours. But thank you, that's all I wanted to ask.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wright. Uh thank you, staff. At this point, I'd like to open the floor for public testimony. Uh there will be a five minute time per speaker, other than the fifteen minutes allowed for the applicants. Uh we'll go we'll go first with proponents and then opponents undecided, and then uh written correspondence, and then applicant will have be have a chance for rebuttal. So at this time, I'd like to call up the applicant to floor, please. Yes. So sit down and press the button and tell us who you are and what you what you want to tell us.
I am the owner of two fifteen North School, and.
And your name?
Teresa Drevdahl.
Thank you.
Yeah, yep. And so what I want to say to you is that this home is very commercial. I am surrounded by, I mean, the the parking along the street is constantly new people all day long. Just so you know, it's not a real residential area, so if you have concerns about, you know, the neighborhood changing because of it, I don't I don't think that's going to be the case, so.
Okay. Okay, uh any questions for the applicant here? Seeing nodding nodding heads, uh is anything else you would like to say? Okay, very good, thank you, we'll we'll call you back up if you want to, to rebut anybody else's testimony. Okay, um I don't have any sheets for any other proponents, uh but I do have one for an opponent, I'm sorry. Yes, opponent, excuse me, and that's Mr. Suppy. And please state your name and your address, and what do you want to tell us?
Good evening, my name is Robert Suppy, and I'm a neighbor two blocks down the street. Um but tonight, I would like to focus very carefully on one of the criteria, uh specifically fifteen two twenty-five zero-six-zero A. And it's interesting, it was mentioned in the staff report, but a very crucial part of the the uh code was left out. It says it will have minimal impact on the livability several things, and what was left out is in the surrounding neighborhood. That's my concern, is the impact of livability on the surrounding neighborhood. Uh Commissioner Newton-Curtis said, quote, "We don't have a real choice," something to that effect, and I'll respectfully disagree. You have a choice of deciding whether or not this meets the criteria. If you think it meets this criteria, then it passes. If you don't think it meets the criteria, then you have the choice of denying it. And I emphasize also that the obligation here is to present that it will have minimal impact, not to just make that claim. Um I can talk about, as as a neighbor two blocks down the street, I can talk about actual impact impacts of uh vacation rentals. Um, I can talk about, as, as a neighbor two blocks down the street, I can talk about actual impacts of uh vacation rentals. When I have neighbors that actually live there, we get to know them and if there are issues, we can talk to them about it. I have a problem in my neighborhood where I'm on a very narrow street. Uh, people park on, on the curb or on the planter strip in violation of city code. I will tell you, we have very good owners of the vacation rentals on my block. They're doing a very good job, but they're not able to communicate successfully to their tenants or to their renters. But they're not supposed to do that on my side of the street. The other side of the street allows it even though it violates the code. I don't like it. I don't like the fact that it tears up my, my planter strip. I don't like the fact that it could damage the curb, both of which I'm financially responsible to maintain. With neighbors, I can politely talk to them. They respect it. It doesn't happen. With these renters, and again, renters are good people also, but they, they don't know this stuff. Um, they also block the uh, the yellow curb, the yellow part of the curb, which is there for a very specific safety reason on my block. And again, neighbors get to learn that. It's not a problem. People that are there as guests, they don't know that and they do it. They're not being evil. They just don't know this stuff. This is one of the differences between having people that actually live there versus people that are guests. And I consider that a far more than minimal impact on the livability of the neighborhood. Um, what else? Oh, I very much appreciate that this will be the primary residence for the owners. That's, that's, that's very good. But as staff stated, that's not binding. So I don't think you can even consider that in your, in, in your approval because that, that could go away at any time. I trust that the applicant intends to live there, but you have no guarantee of that. I can tell you that parking density has been much higher since the vacation rentals went in in my neighborhood. I can tell you that guests are typically louder at night than residents. Um, a while back, I showed this commission a, oh, excuse me. A while back, staff saw a, the density of vacation rentals in this neighborhood. It's extremely high. Uh, diagonally across from that, three out of the four properties are vacation rentals. There's, there's numerous ones in this neighborhood that really changes the char- character of the neighborhood. Um, oh, it was asked about the parking behind the property. I believe that is a lot that is not consistent with the city code because it's gravel. They can only be, as I understand the code and staff can correct me, those are only allowed as temporary lots. So I don't think that can be considered for parking if I am correct and it's, it's not allowed as a permanent lot. Um, it's, it's reasonable to expect that there will be more than minimal impact on local parking. There are two off-street parking spaces. If you approve this, it could have up to 10 occupants. I remind you that 10 occupants is counted as people that spend the night, not the people that visit. It's very believable that one of the big events going on at the cultural center or some other thing could have quite a few more than 10 people there during the day, so long as they leave before the events, but before the nighttime. That could impact parking quite significantly. Um, uh, and uh, yes, having much more people, that could have a much bigger impact on parking. I'll remind you that across the street at the cultural center, their city required parking uh numbers were reduced by 60%. And what has happened, as I showed you before, is during major events, parking is absolutely full for several blocks. Well, additional parking because of this vacation rental, which is likely during these events, could be impacting properties three or four blocks away. When there's no parking, this will push parking that much further out. I don't consider that minimal impact on the neighborhood. Again, the impact on parking is expected, I can expect to be large. Lastly, there's some provisions for managing complaints about a vacation rental. If you read it, it primarily focuses on code enforcement. The problem is, a lot of the objections have nothing to do with code enforcement and code enforcement's got no authority to, to enforce a lot of this. Some of it they do, but in general, they won't. I request that the commission deny the application based on its failure to adhere to the minimal impact standard. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Suppy? Mr. Griffiths?
I'm curious, uh, at what point hype, maybe this is a hypo, it is hypothetical. Uh, let's say it was a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom. Is there a point that you would think that the impact would be acceptable? Or are you telling us that any short-term vacation rental is not acceptable in your opinion?
My, my standard isn't acceptable. My standard is minimal, which is what the code says. And um it could be possibly be minimal if it's just a one-bedroom, but I think certainly, I, I mean, I've seen we have two and three-bedroom properties around us and I don't consider the impact minimal there. Um, and it also depends on which part you're talking about. Parking, no, it goes up dramatically as you have.
Thank you. And I like the comment important intervention as far as subjectivity. So we talked about this before.
Discussion in later meetings that there is a lot of subjectivity in the code. And if the city council would like to fix that, uh, that's up to them. But when you talk about terms like livability, minimal impact that are not defined, neighborhood. Uh, I think it does allow us discretion.
And I would say it allows you discretion on whether that applies. But if you decide that it does not meet minimal impact, then I'd say you have no discretion, you, you have no discretion on approving it. But you do have discretion on, you have judgment on, is it minimal or not? Because there is no standard. And I would agree with that part of it.
Any further questions for Mr. Suppy? Thank you.
I just want to thank you for putting very eloquently stated something.
Okay. I don't have any other opponents or proponents. So would you like to rebut Mr. Suppy's statements? Well, go ahead, go ahead and step up to the mic there. We gotta, we gotta have everything on the record, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I'm surrounded by commercial. I've got a library and a cultural center. And then on the other side, I've got a parking, I think it's a parking lot for the library. And then, so then I've just got neighbors across the street, regular neighbors. So that's all.
Any, any, any follow-on questions? Yes, Commissioner Rickert.
How long have you owned the property?
Um, since October. And it's a big home. That's why I'm trying to get it to be five bedrooms because it's like 3,700 square feet. So it's a big home.
Any, any further questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to close the record or foot, close the public testimony portion of the hearing and get final comments from staff. And a recommendation.
So staff's recommendation is that the commission move to adopt Planning Commission Order 2024-5 with conditions approving the conditional use permit CUP 2319 for a vacation rental home at two fifteen North School Street, Amel County Tax Lot R 3219 AA 3300.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I'd like to open the floor for deliberation. What do we think about this application? Anybody? Mr. Griffiths?
I, I think it's like a lot of
Good, 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 good.
I think it's like a lot of the applicants we've had over whatever period of time, um, we're still left with uh, there's a lot of interpretation, even if somebody wants to uh, talk about livability. How would each of us define that affecting the neighborhood? How, how do people even define a neighborhood? We've bumped this, I think, to the city council before and they chose to do essentially politely minimal?
I would, so this, this commission has asked the planning commission, or has asked the city council to put a temporary moratorium on vacation rentals in the past. That was just about a year ago. Um, and I would say the city council declined, chose to create an ad hoc committee to look into it. That ad hoc committee took the recommendation from this planning commission along with um some information from the police department. That was, we came up with their own recommendations and those were in turn delivered to the city council. City council has directed staff to work on updating short-term rental uh, or vacation rental regulations. We had not started that project yet. And we're planning on starting it this fall. I'm hoping as early as September. But it really depends on our staff bandwidth. We're trying to basically finish a project or two. As soon as those are done, we'll be able to start that. But that's a long-range planning project and until that time, you have applications like this one that are current planning projects, those that come in and have applicants attached to them. So there's, there's an interest, I think, to some extent. The concerns of the planning commission has been heard, but it's, it's always welcome sharing. One of the things that in the lobby, we have our new liaison to the planning commission from the city council, Councilor Boyd, um, Claude, who's here tonight. Um, so he'll be joining us once we come out of quasi judicial. But, you know, those are things that I think will be valuable for him to hear from this body. And it does make me wonder if it was, if this particular topic was a little bit of a black box to Counselor Olson while she was here because she couldn't sit in on the quasi judicial items. So she didn't actually get to listen to these unless she chose to watch it on her own time or something like that. But um, yeah, it is a, it is something that you've gone with and brought up. The issue of livability has certainly come up numerous times through your discussions. I know that you all deliberated on it. You have new faces on the commission now. And as Mr. Suppy brings up, if you choose to make a denial or something of some sort, it's best to be done with this criteria in mind. But livability has been the option for those of you that have chosen to vote against things at times when you have been uncomfortable. I think that's the criteria that I typically invoke because many of those other criteria, particularly related to vacation rentals as a special use, are fairly clear and objective. But the conditional use permit criteria are relatively broad and are highly subjective. So those do leave it to you to, to kind of rattle with whether or not something fits those criteria.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn?
Um, thank you, Clay. That was very helpful. And um, if I recall, and I think it was briefly stated, I believe that this was a 10-month out of the year was going to be residential and then it was going to be just rented in the two-month period? Yes, so, and the in the staff report, it was mentioned that this would be 10 months residential and that only in two months of the year, it would actually be that rental property. So it, it actually, I feel like it kind of, I don't mean open an old movie, but it kind of reminds me of when we discussed the um homeless shelter area that was half kind of pushing that resi- um industrial area next to the residential. This kind of seems very similar where it's right off 99, there's the cultural center. It's kind of pushing that residential as the applicant has pointed out. So it actually seems like a lesser of a concern compared to some of the other properties that we have seen. They've been very forthcoming.
Minimal?
That is the question, isn't it? They compare, I would say comparatively. And it's not with the utmost respect to all, our, all participants involved, community, applicants, otherwise.
If that's what you think, then that's, that's what we're here to talk about.
But that's what I think if we're talking about minimal compared to some of the other properties that have been much more opposed. Um, that is a very culturally vibrant part of town and I think that it's a very interesting spot to have that in. And there's
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Uh, Commissioner Dean Curtis?
Yeah, without wanting to sound sarcastic, which I believe I will sound, I agree to some extent that it will have minimal impact on livability, but only because there are so many vacation homes that we have approved within that area that it's becoming more of a hotel zone than it is a neighborhood in whatever way we want to define neighborhood. And I know I sounded awful then, but
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Griffiths?
Uh, I agree with what everybody's saying. I would uh, I don't know how we could address it or even if it's appropriate, but one of the concerns is we have the information that's in the application and the day we approve it, the next day, one, it goes with the property and it can be five-bedroom, no owner occupancy ever. Uh, and that's, and we don't have the ability to, well, maybe I guess we do. We could have a motion that said you can only use it for two months of the year, but we've never done that before.
You, Clay, you do. And that was actually one of the things that James and I were sidebar-ing a little bit on here is there's specifically because this is a conditional use permit, you have the ability to apply conditions. That's, that's the point. Um, there's a whole list under fifteen two two five point zero eight zero. Your commission has not chosen this. This is all, this is, this is available. This is why conditions are there. Conditional use permits are subjective. It's known. And the reason they come to this body is because they could have spillover, they could have impacts, they could have things that need mitigating. And so conditions are used to do that, just like there are conditions already in the staff report. If there are other conditions this body would like to apply because it feels things need mitigating to bring them into something where they do not have a negative impact on the surrounding area, but the use could be approved if, if those uses are mitigated, those are there. And so there is a whole laundry list of items in there. It can be maintenance of the grounds, regulation of noise, vibration, odors, regulation of time of certain activities, time period within the proposed use shall be developed, duration of use. And then it even says such other conditions as will make possible the development of the city in an orderly and efficient manner in conformity with the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan and Development Code. It's pretty broad.
Uh, Clay, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but should the commission decide to impose any conditions, there must be facts supporting those conditions in their application. So in other words, you can't just say, well, I feel this needs to have this condition. You need to have a set of facts that says, okay, this is why I feel this. In other words, you can't just say, okay, this one is this way and this one is that way.
They cannot be arbitrary and capricious. Keep in mind, what this commission is trying to do is the opposite of arbitrary and capricious. You want to be consistent and you want to be fair and you want to be proportional. And proportional is what it should do. It should be targeted. And whatever, if you do apply a condition, it should fix the problem. So you have to know what the problem is first that needs fixing. And so that's what that condition is intended to do. It's supposed to mitigate whatever the, the negative or unintended consequence is.
Okay, so Commissioner Griffith, just as a hypothetical, do you feel there's any conditions we need to impose upon this particular application? And if so, what facts have been presented to support them?
Well, I think the fact, uh, I'm not in agreement that there have to be facts because we've talked about this before. It's, there are too many subjective terms that already exist that if uh, simply if I think that it should be limited to two months of the year, let me finish, two months of the year, uh, or limit the amount of cars that can be parked there, I can simply address that and say, I think that will have the least impact or an acceptable impact on the, quote, neighborhood or livability or those types of things.
I concede your point on that. Okay, so what uh what's the right term for, for those things you just said? Well, what sort of things, justification? What's, what justifications we need? You need to have something. It's, it can't be just because I want to. In this particular, in this specific case.
If I may, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Good.
Well, isn't, isn't the justification or the facts in the applicant's, I mean, in the application, right? She filled it out as six to eight weeks during the summer, she won't be there. Isn't, wouldn't that be the fact or the justification?
Right, but it sticks, the conditions we put on it sticks with it in perpetuity. So, so if she sells it, then, you know, so and, and she's, and she has said that, but she also hasn't put it in there that she particularly wants that uh restriction on there. You see the difference?
I see the difference, yeah, but we're, but we're applying it a condition to that application that was stated what she wants.
So what if, what if we propose to um approve the conditional use permit within that timeframe as proposed in the application given the fact that there are concerns about livability outside of that timeframe?
Okay. So then, then the question is, are those livability concerns legitimate in the eyes of the commission?
I think the commission has a lot of concerns about livability, livability over the last few years. And if we have an opportunity to uphold that in a conditional use permit, which could be altered as
So livability in a general sense, as far as vacation rentals, is different than livability concerns about the specific application. We can't make, we can't make a decision about a specific application based upon generalities about all applications.
That is true, but we can make a decision based on the livability of the city. And we have all expressed at one point or another, most of us, a concern about the quantity and the ratio of vacation rentals in the city limits. And if there is one that we could approve conditionally as outlined by the application, while taking into consideration that we might be able to take into the concerns that we have been, I might say bombarded with by residents, would be a happy medium.
Possibly. What do we think? I'm seeing, I'm seeing nutting heads, but we gotta, we gotta, we gotta talk here. There's gotta be words. Use your words, people.
I like what Commissioner Quinn said.
I think a compromise, that is one possibility, but I'd like to hear from other people, assuming, you know, maybe people are in favor just the way it is. But is another possibility that we approve it only at the three-bedroom level? And we could still approve it for the entire year, not restricted to those two months, but we could restrict the bedrooms. That's one option.
That seems indicative of the, um, inspection though. And that's what's that sliding thing that we don't really have control over. So like, the timeframe seems like something that we have a better grasp on, being that that scale was based on the impending inspection.
No, I think we do have control over that, based on this is conditional. It's conditional on, on the criteria within bounds, given the, the code. But yeah, we do have, um, some control over that.
Okay, so is the question I'm hearing coming down to, if we were going to pose, propose a restriction on this, it's, it's a choice between two months out of the year with five bedrooms or three bedrooms and the whole year? Would that be fair, a fair assessment?
I, that's the part that is, uh, has concerned me from the beginning, is the three to five bedrooms. And I feel like, um, this, we're setting a precedent here for future applicants or conditional use.
Oh, as far as the squishiness that they were talking about?
Correct. Yeah, the squishiness.
Good word?
Yeah, I like it.
Go ahead, Clay.
Uh, another sidebar with James and I here, and so I want to say, yes, the, you do have the ability to condition based on bedroom count. It's one of the conditions in there, and you could simply remove the condition. The applicant would have the ability, if they chose to in the future, to come back and try and, and basically request to modify the condition of approval if they wanted to in the future. So that, that doesn't take that ability for them to, when they do have five bedrooms, to come back and modify. Part of the reason that staff chose to offer a pathway that appeared to give them more flexibility is there's some significant cost associated with the new application, because it would be considered that modification would be a high enough threshold. They'd basically be charged at full pop again, just a couple of thousand dollars. So we were trying to be reasonable and accommodating and, and work with them as, you know, people would hope to, to get. But in a fair way. So, but to let, that your, your board, your commission know, you do have the ability to condition based on bedroom count. And the applicant would retain the ability to request a modification in the future.
Okay.
But they'd have to come to this body.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you, Commissioner Rickert. Go ahead.
So what safeguards is the city putting in so this doesn't happen again, that sliding scale? Nothing in the standards is changing. We're developing a pathway so that, what we, what we identified was that people are requesting bedrooms, say five. In this case, just because we have five and three, and I'm gonna stick with those numbers. They would come in with an application for five bedrooms, but then we would look somewhere and verify the bedroom count based on best available data, just tax assessor data for us, and we'd find that it wasn't the same. And so we started a pathway when this happened once, twice, and a third time. This is the first time where an individual has chosen to remedy the problem. In all other ones, they have said, oh, we'll go with the lower count, we'll just go ahead. And so that has happened multiple times within the last year coming to this body. Some of that you wouldn't have known, because it wouldn't happen at this hearing, it happened with staff. But in this case, the applicant said, I'm willing to address that, and they moved forward. And so that's why they have a change of use in play with the, with the building official and the building division.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, James.
And I think also, just, just to kind of add some context as far as, you know, the eating is here. So this application was submitted, I believe, in November. And so there kind of, there was a process where, as staff, we kind of established a, a preliminary process that took a while for the applicant to, um, you know, meet and, and kind of meet the standards that planning and building set up. And then, um, we started kind of balancing them going through that adjustment process with the hundred-and-twenty-day. That was, um, extended twice. Um, so now we're up against the, like, I think it's two-hundred-and-thirty-five is, is the hard-hard deadline. So kind of the logic behind the sliding scale was more, I mean, they, they could have just, we could have just said no, and then they have to go through the modification process. But just kind of balancing that hard-hard deadline with this effort that, that's gone in, uh, is kind of why that came up. And I think, I mean, and, and Clay, I don't know, I mean, your thoughts on this, but kind of now that this test run is done, I would imagine that the building official planning process i- is a bit smoother, that that timeline aspect of it wouldn't contribute to this, just to, to speak to the guidelines. But that, you know, that's, you know, conceptual, and of course may, you know, that's not hard and fast. But in most circumstances, with those additional extensions, someone should be able to complete the change of use. However, we have lots of circumstances where people think a project, they can do it like that, and for whatever reason, they don't. And there are probably lots and lots of good reasons why they can't or don't. But that's why we can't assure that someone could do this in that timeframe. The applicant always had the ability to withdraw and come in when the bedroom counts were verified and those sorts of things. But they, they chose to work with us, and we chose to allow them and try and identify pathway where they could try and get the building, uh, the portions of the building up to code while, uh, before they withdrew the application. So this is where we are today. And it's an attempt to be flexible and to work with the applicant. You have the request that's before you, and you can decide what you would like to do with it.
Okay, thank you. Does, does there, uh, answers satisfy your concerns, Commissioner? Okay, thank you. Um, so back to the supposition I made. So are we thinking that, that, uh, do we want to impose a condition of, uh, two months or three bedrooms or nothing, or what do we think?
Can we ask the, the applicant?
We have to reopen the public record for that, which would lead to uh, opening it for both opponents and proponents and go through the whole process again?
Maybe before, may I comment as to that? As Commissioner Rickert has pointed out, that we might be sliding. We can kind of work with this a little bit. And that there are homes in the city that maybe don't abide by the taxes and lodging. And they just kind of do it on their own. And the fact that, um, he has pointed out that many have, can be called on how many rooms there are truly in a home, and then have backed down, as the applicant has pointed out. It is, it is, it is a very large property. I'm not sure if you've seen it, but it's a very large.
Thirty-seven hundred square feet.
Thirty-seven hundred square feet. So I, I appreciate as a homeowner, if I went through the proper channels and didn't try and do back channels and not go through the city, if I tried to put in the effort, I'm trying to balance the fact that it's a thirty-seven-hundred-square-foot home. I'm trying to take into effect that while it is a culturally centered-facing spot, there are residences remotely in the area. I think that if we propose, as per the mention in the application, that it's going to be used two months of the year for this purpose, that it could be approved for a two-month timeframe or up to five rooms, because that is that sliding scale. Because it could be three based on the inspection. I think that it's very fair, considering the fact that some people operate under the guidelines, that some people try and push the limit, get called on it, and just back down, that the applicant has done very well by the city, is making the effort to work with it within the property rights that they have of this site. I think it's very fair that we would consider a conditional use permit for the two-month period outside in the application for up to five rooms.
Okay, so five, five rooms in two months.
I don't disagree with you. That's why I asked if we could ask the applicant, because before I'd want to recommend, assuming that someone wants to modify the recommendation to begin with, what's more appetite, uh, appealing to the applicant? Uh, three bedrooms for the whole year or five bedrooms for two months? So, uh,
Hey, I get.
Commissioner Wright has a con- like, make a comment?
Uh, one second, Commissioner Wright. So, uh, so, so you're in favor, as assuming the applicant is, but, uh, with that, so for two and five. So anyone else, or think that, besides, besides Commissioner Quinn? Yeah, so Commissioner Wright, go ahead.
I would be concerned, Commissioner Wright. Um, I would be concerned if we limit it to two months of the year. That might be, uh, overstepping our boundaries as the commission. Um, but it is in the criteria of the three and up, uh, three up to five-bedroom in the application. And as Mr. Suppa pointed out, the, uh, two months out of the year is not really a criteria of approval, even though we can put a condition on it, that might infringe on their rights of commerce would be my concern. Um, as some people sign off a waiver, um, I think it was for, uh, something to do with, well, anyway. I think that might be overstepping the boundaries of, uh, of this commission. Uh, just a thought there, but has every.
Uh, just to clarify, we're not talking about it being open for rentals for two months of the year. We're talking about it being a primary residence for two months of the year. Is it the other way around?
I, I believe, Commissioner Wright, that that was addressed by the city with regards to the fact that being a conditional permit should always be reapplied down the right line for the conditional use to be rejected. But I believe it too was the ten months of the year is residential and two months is rental.
Okay. Shows what I know sometimes. Yeah.
I, I, one more. I'm not gonna care. Um, there is an opponent to this. What I would like, what I want to think about personally as we move forward, um, I don't think that we're setting a precedent, because, one, it's not a court. But what I am concerned about is, uh, I want to view this as though there was no opponent, because there's a lot of application. The majority have no opponents. But I think we should still apply the same standard, what, individually, like what we think it, and not just, okay, yeah, that's fine, uh, just because nobody chose to say something. I, I mean, I think we're all saying the same. It's a difficult situation.
I think we're pretty good on that front, if, if, if it was my opinion. Okay, um, so with all of that said, do we have a, any motions we'd like to make?
Planning Commissioner Wright moves to approve order twenty-two-four-zero-five, approving CUP twenty-three dash zero-zero-one-nine for a vacation rental home with condition of inspection permit S-N-S-T-R-two-four-dash-zero-zero-seven-nine for three-up-to-five-bedroom application at two-fifteen North School Street, Newburgh, Oregon.
Very well, thank you. I have a, a motion. Do I have a second to the motion? Okay, I, I don't here have a second for the motion, so the motion fails. Do I have another motion regarding this, regarding this application? Different motion.
Okay, same one. Commissioner Wright moves to approve order twenty-two-four-dash-o-five, approving CUP twenty-three-dash-zero-zero-one-nine for a vacation rental home based on condition of inspection permit for three-up-to-five-bedroom application and for use out of two months of the year as a rental, short-term rental.
Very well, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Very well, Ms., uh, Commissioner Quinn, second to the motion. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mayne Quinn?
Yes.
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Abby Seitz?
Yes.
Randy Rickert?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Jose? How do you say your last name?
Vialpano. Vialpano.
Vialpano.
Yeah, and yes.
Okay. Lyndon Newton-Curtis?
Yes.
Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
Very well. Thank you very much. We have a motion passes CUP twenty-three-dash-zero-zero-nine, zero-zero-one-nine. Thank you very much for your time. Okay, thank you, Commissioners. Well, moving on to a legislative hearing. Uh, at this point, I'd like to call for abstentions and objections to jurisdiction. Hearing none. And for this, we don't need a disclaimer. That's, that's correct? That's right. Okay. You got out of one, Abby. Okay, uh, moving on to the staff reporter, Mr. Cromie, I assume.
Thank you, Commissioners. Jeremiah Cromie, Associate Planner, for the record. The first code amendment tonight is DCA twenty-three-dash-zero-zero-two for daycare code amendments. Does clicker working? Cool. Clicker's working, all right. So back in November of last year, Councilor Member Olson, who's now resigned from council, presented on daycare barriers to the city council. And part of that daycare barriers was directing staff to look at the barriers that city council and Counselor Olson had in particular shown. And then as part of that, city coun- or, city council approved the Planning Division's work plan that included childcare updates as part of their, at their January twenty, sorry. Yeah, sorry about that. January sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four meeting. Staff in beginning of twenty-twenty-four conducted a review of those barriers and then shared a results memo that's in your attachments to Counselor Olson and interested daycare parties. So the proposal that, and I'll, I'll back up, uh, with the memo that's in there saying, so there's been a few other things outside of just code amendments. City council passed a system development charge. They dropped all the fees for daycare uses. Um, some of the other barriers that are in there that we're not going to talk about tonight. There was, we've changed it, our paper permitting process to electronic permitting process. There are some other minor things that try to speed up permits timelines. Um, and these are kind of just the leftovers that were part of that. And there are some other items that staff, we looked at, but did not think it was in the best interest of the city to change. So with the, this current proposal, it would change daycare uses in light industrial areas to permitted uses. And this is actually to comply with state law thirty-one-oh-nine from twenty-twenty-one, um, which does require that. And then we looked at the parking requirements, which are extremely high for the city of Newburgh compared to neighboring jurisdictions and other jurisdictions in the area, as well as just being almost one of the highest in the city of all uses. Um, and then add a definition of place structure where they can be located. So as you can see in the table, we'll go through the proposed code language changes. M-one and M-two, which are all light industrial, currently requires a conditional use permit. That's going to change to be permitted use for that state law. And then we add a definition of place structure, which is like all your swing sets, your playground, equipment, jungle gems. Um, those are allowed in the required yard setbacks. No cushion three feet of property land for interior lot lines, which is most, most people's backyards. Um, have a five-foot setback in the city and then ten feet from any front lot line. So that's typically your street setback. And then the off-street parking code language changes currently is five spaces per a thousand square feet. Um, staff has looked at that. We're proposing one space per employee plus one space for ten children or adults cared for. So daycares can be an adult daycare. Uh, most people don't know that, but it's true. And then currently, um, it's in the memo, but just to formalize that, to find family-child care homes in the single-family dwellings, uh, we would not require off-street parking other than for the required dwelling. So the findings you can see in your packet, but you go through the statewide planning goals, the comprehensive plan, and then the legislative amendments. Uh, staff would recommend that you adopt resolution twenty-two-four-three-ninety-four, recommending council adopts the daycare code amendments. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Yes, um, Commissioner Wright, I showed that, uh, on some of my stuff, it says, uh, one parking space per employee plus one per five children. Is that a typo?
Yes, there was, we talked about five, five spaces at one point. Uh, and you're born welcome to recommend five for five students or, or, or adults.
Um, how many, uh, spaces would normally, okay, five parking spaces per one-thousand square feet? So what if a, uh, building is less than one-thousand square feet? Do they still have to? So that's only one. Okay. Nope. Good. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure the typo. Just wanted to make sure the typo. It's all good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Any further questions for staff? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. Moving on to public testimony at this point, we'll open the floor for public testimony. Um, uh, people will have five minutes to speak since this there's no real applicants here since this is the city code uh proposal. Uh, we'll go with five minutes for me, and I believe the only sheet I have is again for Mr. Suppy. Oh, for the sign one, excuse me. Excuse me, I'm getting ahead of myself. Um, so I don't think there's anybody here for the daycare and so. Uh, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing and move on to final comments from staff after those non comments.
Thank you. Staff has still recommend adopting resolution number twenty twenty four three ninety four.
Very well, thank you very much. And now we'll move on to deliberation. Uh, what do we think about? This amendment? Or I should say, yeah, proposed code amendment.
Seems like it's catching things up a bit.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, anyone else?
I really. Commissioner Wright, I really like what uh staff has done in looking at all these codes and everything. I think it's wonderful myself. I love the uh. I love the ability for uh more childcare. Uh, the barriers to be lowered to have more childcare available to everyone. It was definitely a barrier to me as a single adult with a child growing up. It's important that we have more of them and that they're safe and all that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have a motion?
Commissioner Griffiths, I recommend the planning commission approve resolution two zero two four dash three nine four as written by staff.
Very well, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Wright, second.
She beat you. I have a motion and second. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Laney Quinn?
Yes.
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Abby Seitz?
Yes.
Randy Rickert?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Jose?
Yes.
Lyndon Newton Curtis?
Yes.
Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
Our motion passes and is um moves on to city city council, I believe, for this, yes. Moving on, we have DCA twenty four dash zero zero one, a signed code amendment. Uh, at this point, I'd like to call for abstentions and objections to jurisdiction. Hearing none. Moving on to staff report from again Mr. Cromie.
Thank you, Chair. Jeremiah Cromie again, Associate Planner for the Record. Uh, so this code proposed code amendment is file number DCA twenty four dash zero zero one. Get the clicker here. So background, oh, there we go. Code enforcement staff asks staff, planning staff, to bring code amendments to fix an issue in the field regarding difference between portable and minor freestanding signs. Uh, picture on the left to be a portable and then what would most likely be considered minor freestanding on the right. Uh, it's kind of hard to see on that uh and clean up some language regarding those definitions to make it clear which ones which as currently they can be considered. Uh, portable sign and then just cleaning up some language regarding time restrictions around signs downtown. Uh, so. It's kind of what I just mentioned, some clerical fixes, and then how code enforcement verifies permission for portable signs. And cleaning up some time in downtown where it would sign, there's current sign language, which I'll get to in a slide. Would not be allowed to be put out while the business is closed. That's staying in. There's just some other hours that are also kind of a secondary. Don't need to be there. So the proposed changes. For freestanding sign means any sign supported by structures or supports that are anchored or inserted is the change to the definition for the freestanding sign. And then the portable sign is taking taking out that permanently. And so it's not inserted in or attached to the ground. And there's some just cleanup language on Resolute Highways. And then this is the code language changes regard regarding the time restrictions and the. Code enforcement presentable permission, written permission to use on the property. So taking out the two to five. And then and taking out all signs may display only during the following hours. And then still saying can't be allowed for more than four consecutive days, but when the business is closed, the sign cannot be out. It's still staying in the code. So in your packet, you can find the statewide planning goals related to this, a comprehensive plan, and then this is a type four legislative hearing. Staff would recommend adopting resolution twenty twenty four three ninety five to approve these code amendments related to signs to city council. Sergeant Ronning is here as the principal proponent from code enforcement or from code enforcement division to. Answer any further questions that I would not be able to answer for you.
I have a quick clarification.
Go ahead.
The four consecutive days. Uh. Am I correct in hearing that if you take the sign down during the closed hours, then you've broken the four consecutive days?
That would be correct.
Uh, so I. Maybe it was in there and I I missed it, but what's the rationale for taking out the time restrictions?
It's really is cleanup. You can recommend they stay. Um, there's already the code requirement that they are removed during non-business hours, so unless. There's a twenty-four hour consecutive business, um, which could come up in Commissioner Griffith's case of the four consecutive days.
So. I believe. I believe those time restrictions in there, so I'm I'm recalling this because I think I was on the commission when we put those restrictions in, and I believe Mr. Suppy was probably at that meeting. And so uh I'm I'm struggling to recall the exact rationale, but I believe it was for sandwich boards and sign boards and that sort of thing out during like bar hours for like. Bar businesses and people didn't want to be tripping over those when let's say some exuberant customers were out the. Out at those particular hours. And so I believe I could be mistaken. That's why those time limits were put in, so. I don't know if things have changed, but uh I I think it's a record. It's been, I think, since COVID, since we've even had a sign issue, which seems. Weird because we always had sign issues about every other year it seemed before that. But so uh I guess we can talk about that when the when the time comes or something, but I correct me if I'm wrong, if there's any kind of. Uh, different different uh history there or that you're aware of.
I I'm not aware of any history there. Uh, Mr. Downing, maybe?
So this is a recommendation that came from our code enforcement staff. I think it has to do with the the feasibility and whether or not it's really. An effective use of staff time to go kind of leasing, as it were, these sorts of activities. Um, and I think that it's become inconvenient to the point of not really being feasible and therefore it was determined that it didn't need to remain because. It's it's not being carried out in a way or can be carried out in a way that's there. So think of it in terms of administrative feasibility. But if code enforcement wants to correct me on any of that, then they're welcome to, but um that's my recollection because. This is really something that came from the field staff who deal with this on a daily basis. Um, so this isn't some something that the planner dreamed up.
Okay. Reminded of words of Andrew Jackson, so anyway, uh. Okay, any questions for staff? Okay, thank you. Uh, this point we'll open the open up for public testimony and so uh would you like to be the uh opponent or proponent and uh and give us a little little bit? Thanks.
Make sure you hold on to that fifteen minutes.
Uh, good evening. I'm uh Sergeant Eric Ronning, uh Newburgh Police Department. I'm also the code enforcement supervisor. Um, uh, as staff has already mentioned, uh, these were uh corrections were um or suggestions were put forward by uh. Primarily myself and the code enforcement uh officer, uh Neil Winner. Um, after we get we get quite a few. Complaints, argument complaints primarily in the language between the freestanding, the portable sign, because a lot of people. Consider them interchangeable. So at least in terms of uh of that change, that's why we wanted to make that uh. Uh, that change regarding the languages to make them a little more. You know, separated. So we do, because we find ourselves uh arguing with folks quite a bit about what's freestanding, what's portable, what's temporary and so on. In terms of the. In terms of the times, the different times throughout the different parts of the day. Um, uh, we felt it was much simpler, you know, they can't be out after after hours, they can't be out after business hours. And in terms of uh, you know, Commissioner Dale mentioned. Uh, I I don't know what your reasons for initially putting them in there, but you mentioned something about.
Believe that's what it was, is bars and bars and.
No, no, no. I mean, I wasn't there is what I meant to say.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But uh, but in terms of that being out of the way, uh, we deal with. On off on some occasions, uh, problems with the posting or the placement of those signs. Uh, but primarily they're not allowed to be in the in the sidewalk. Anyway, they'd have to be, uh, you know, right away, like a planter scrap out by a tree out of the sidewalk. I'm not aware of. I'm not aware of complaints, any regarding the, excuse me, those signs being in the actual walkway. Um, that aren't either close to a door or out of the way. So that was our rationale for taking out those because there's different times for for different days. It's very, I've never seen a complaint on it. Um, code enforcement uh doesn't work those hours. It would have to be something we'd follow up on anyway. Uh, the following day or business day. Um, and oftentimes that's taken care of by contacting the business owner if there is in fact a complaint. But yet I've never seen. So it was our estimation that taking those uh taking those different varying times out, when it would be just simpler to say you can't have them up after business hours. It would be sufficient.
Excuse, so uh just a quick question. You've been uh in your position for what, three years, four years?
I have been with the city of Newburgh as a police officer, uh, working as a police officer for twenty-five years.
Well, as a police officer, but in this in this particular enforcement job?
That's correct. I've probably only been doing uh code enforcement. Is supervising that uh for. Two to three years, you are correct.
Three years, okay.
But I have dealt with city code for twenty-five years. So that's what I meant.
Okay. Uh, any anything further? I didn't interrupt you, sorry.
No, no, that's fine. I don't have anything else.
Okay, okay. Any questions for Officer Ronning?
I'm just curious. You you said the uh main thing is the addressing the complaints about what type of sign it is? Like whether it's per, go ahead.
Yeah, let's see. Uh, yeah, I think in terms of the language between the 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 freestanding and the portable sign. Um, we had a lot of people, uh, sometimes it's during during, it might be events or it might be elections or, you know, or what have you, and then they want to argue over. You know, well, this is a freestanding sign. Well, this is, no, it's a portable sign. And. You know, some people argue freestanding is a portable, portable is freestanding. We try to explain it. So we're just trying to clean it up a little bit better. I don't think I significantly changed the. Uh, you know, the meaning of either one of them, um, other than to make it a little simpler for people to understand, so.
Yeah, I think you answered my question. I was basically, uh, maybe I didn't read it as thoroughly as I should have. Uh. What was the impetus for? Is it basic? Is it election signs that people are?
Uh. The most biggest concern? Primarily primarily election signs, but it could, um, it's also, uh, you know, advertising signs. Um, as well, just the difference between one or the other, whether in the neighborhoods or whether it be on a on a on a public right of way versus in a neighborhood or the uh Resolute area, so.
Any further questions for Officer Ronning?
So. That would apply for downtown and everywhere, right? And residential area as well.
Well, in terms of the change in in the language for, uh, yeah, the change in language uh for the freestanding signs versus a portable sign. Would change across the board. Not necessarily changing any rules uh uh based on where a sign would go. Uh, as the code states now, that would stay the same. I'm not changing anything in terms of the Resolute Highway downtown, other than the fact that resolute it isn't a word. So I wanted to change it to resolute. That was the only thing we changed in that that section. And then again, the times like I just mentioned.
Okay, that, okay. Any further questions?
Maybe it's for staff. I know we uh, it's not quasi judicial, so we don't ask for a consent.
It's a little, it's a little more free or a little more open for for that sort of thing, so yeah.
I I just feel like it's appropriate. I should disclose I own Old Town, uh, and we use two sandwich boards, so. Uh, I don't, I would recuse myself in voting if that's. Uh, or at least I want people to understand.
So this isn't the same sort of a thing, so I I don't think that that's an issue.
Okay.
Personally.
If if any commissioner feels that they have something that. They do or that could be interpreted as bias, you're still welcome to disclose disclose it, even if you don't have to. So disclosing a potential bias that you don't feel is a bias or ex parte or something is still still okay. Um, even though you are doing a recommendation, it's not your quasi judicial.
I'd like to propose an amendment to the code. No Old Town signs at all. Just kidding. Uh, um, oh, I had I had one kind of off topic question. So you said you've been a police officer for twenty-five years. And with code enforcement supervision for two to three weeks, I how much overlap was there? Or if any, between those two, I mean, as a police officer, were you really ever dealing with like code enforcement calls very much or?
I can tell you that uh the 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 scope has changed since I've uh become supervisor of code enforcement, so. I'm in in uh dealing with a lot more codes uh now than I had than I did, you know, as a as an officer or. Or detective or any other administrator in the department. Um, uh, sign code, though, in one way or another, seems to have always been a recurring. A recurring issue since I've been in patrol.
That's that's why I was expressing surprise earlier. That's that's like it's been a long time.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, thank you. Uh, if there's no further questions for Officer Ronning, I'll let you go and maybe call you back. Thank you. Okay, and I don't see anybody else in the room, so Mr. Suppy, please. And we we don't have anybody on Zoom. Good, thank you.
Thank you. My name's Robert Suppy. Um, yes, I was around nine years ago when the major.
Has it been that long?
I looked that up. It was early two thousand fifteen and it wasn't a meeting. It was quite a number of meetings.
That's right.
Um, anyway, I did have some involvement at the time and I wanted to give some historical perspective on why some of these things were done as they were. I'm not necessarily saying I'm in favor or against them, but I wanted to give you some uh background. The two to five AM. That was sort of as you described, but also that uh the commission thought it really isn't a good idea to have signs out all night downtown. It just doesn't look good. Uh, keep in mind, your new code does allow signs twenty-four hours downtown. If I have a twenty-four hour business, I'm allowed to put a sign out there for twenty-four hours a day. I don't have to be a downtown business. I just have to get somebody downtown to let me put it in front of their property. Uh, and if that's acceptable, then, you know, so be it. Um. What else? Um, yeah, it's very important. One of the things that was clear, a lot of clarifications got done nine years ago that I thought was wonderful. It wasn't clear back then. If the time constraints were on the business being advertised or the business it was in front of, and the planning commission said, nope, it's the business. It's being advertised, not the one you're in front of. Um, but anyway, like I said, with that change, you can have signs twenty-four hours if if your business is a twenty-four hour business. Um. What else? Oh, residential. Um, something I pushed a lot on. Previous to the changes, we basically didn't allow any signs in residential right of ways. You know, you think of garage sale signs, house for sale signs, open house sizes, they were prohibited. They they were only allowed with a permit. But the city made it clear they don't issue that permit. Now, that's not to say those signs didn't exist. One of my arguments and other people was, look, you got to write code that you're actually willing to enforce. The idea that we're not going to allow it, but we'll allow it. Is ridiculous and that's where it eventually came about as it did. Um. The, oh, uh, the the thing about attaching the permission to a sign, the reason that was thrown in is. If the code says you can only have two signs and I see two signs in front of a business and I'm a jerk and I want to get them taken out, I can put a third sign there. Code enforcement can say, no, there's too many signs. They can all go out. So attaching it to it, I'm not saying that's necessary, but I'm just giving you some history. Um. Okay, very, very important. I'm very happy to see that the definition of portable and freestanding is being clarified. I brought that up before, that your standard political sign that pokes into the ground. Actually fits both of those definitions. The problem is, I don't think that. The problem is, I don't think that. The rest of the code is being read carefully. In the residential right of way, the only, and again, these are planter strips typically between the sidewalk and the curb. The only signs that are allowed in the code presently and as, as stated here are portable. So your standard political sign that's got a metal H frame pokes into the ground. Your standard for sale sign that pokes, any sign that pokes into the ground. Based on the revision is prohibited. In the right of way in residential areas, talking about downtown. Again, if that's acceptable to this body, that's fine. But keep in mind, that's a lot of signs you're prohibiting. You know, the cultural center, they put up these signs to help direct traffic for events. Those are all in the, generally in the right of way, most of them are, and they poke into the ground. Those are free standing based on the new definition. They are no longer portable. They are therefore prohibited. What else? Also, very, very important. I, I think the code is not being read carefully tonight. In particular. The, the code C six, the sign owner must have the signs removed during hours when the business being advertised is closed. That is in the code that's C six. That only applies to C three and C four zones. If you go to section D for lots and others zones, it explicitly says with the exception of subsection C six above. In other words, the only when open does not apply in the residential area. And that sure seemed to be discussed earlier as applying. So. Signs in the public right of way in a residential area are not constrained by when the business is open. And in some ways that makes sense. If I'm advertising Fred for, for, for mayor. You know, when is that business open? But anyway, I want to be clear because that seemed to be misrepresented tonight. What else? Oh, the hours in residential areas. I understand that that looks a little complicated. But I would ask. The remaining standard is that I can't put a sign in the public right of way for more than four days. How is code enforcement going to establish that the sign was there for four days? If they come out and say, Mr. Suppy, the sign's been here four days. I go, have you been really watching this for 96 hours? Because I took it down for a few hours. That, that to me is very difficult to enforce. If you have hours, I can take a picture of a sign at 3:00 AM. When it's not allowed or 11:00 PM. And yes, I can be accused of doctoring the photo, but I can at least provide evidence to staff that says, no, this, this violated the time constraints. The time constraints were put in to somewhat mimic downtown. The idea was downtown, we, we weren't going to allow signs throughout the night. The idea was, well, that sort of makes sense in residential areas, but. Residential areas are a little different. And quite honestly, it was specifically discussed, what about garage sales? You want to be able to put out a sign on Thursday and have it for a Friday, Saturday, maybe Sunday sale. So the idea was you can put a sign out on Thursday. You have to take it in Sunday before the night and the other nights we don't want signs out in neighborhoods. So they have to come down also. I mean, that was, that was the logic. And again, not, not saying you have to follow it, but I want to give you that. Yes, what else? And I, oh, I want to mention some things that this doesn't accomplish that have been brought up many times. For nine years I've been mentioning. Say I run the old fashioned festival and I want to put a sign in downtown Newburgh. Based on the current code and the, the new code, I can only put it down there. I can't put it there when the old fashioned festival is closed. So it can only go out Thursday morning when the old fashioned festival is open, has to come down Thursday night, can be there Friday, can be there Saturday. But I can't put a sign up a week or so ahead of time saying, come to the old fashioned festival. I think the old fashioned festival is wonderful and I think it ought to be advertised there, but according to code it doesn't. Now, our solution to it, which is all too often the case is we just ignore that code. And I, I say the old fashioned festival, there's plenty of other events. They're only open when they're open. And based on the code, their signs can't be out there downtown. We're not talking about residential areas. That doesn't get fixed. It doesn't fix an issue that, that council seemed concerned about and was told it would be addressed and it wasn't. I live on a corner. I'm allowed to have an unlimited number of minor free standing sides, signs. On the side of my property that's not the front yard and it's 10 feet back from the right of way. An unlimited number. Again, maybe you don't care about somebody having 50 signs in their yard, but. The council, at least one member of the council did. I'm not sure. There may have been others. The last thing it doesn't address is the non enforcement of this current code. I've tried to file, or I have filed complaints about some political signs. And I was told, and I quote, Newburgh Municipal Code does not apply to these signs. That was very surprising to me because, I mean, it applies to all signs. I was also told that if I, if my complaints are against one party signs and not the oppositions, and in fact, I didn't even see the oppositions. But that they were going to be put at the bottom of the list, lowest priority. Nothing in this code says I have to be equal in what signs I, I, I complain about. But that's how code enforcement has determined it will be. Anyway, I just want to reiterate. Think of all the signs that are getting excluded from residential right of ways. The normal signs that go, people don't usually put A frame signs. In residential areas, they're putting the kinds that go in the ground. They're prohibited here. Again, if you're okay with that, you're okay with that. But I want you to be clear. And secondly, be real clear, the contrary to what was said, the, the restriction on when the business is closed does not apply in residential areas. Code is very clear about that. And other than that, I thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Suppy? Okay, thank you. Officer Aronin, would you like to speak to any of that? Okay, thank you. At this point, I'd like to close the public testimony portion of the hearing and get some final comments from staff and a recommendation.
Sure. So I, I do want to make one clarification on the timeframe. So it's not, as Mr. Suppy pointed out, it's not really to just downtown. It would go across the city as far as the timeframes go.
As far as removing the, the two to five.
The two to five and the rest of those hours. So with that, staff would still recommend approving resolution 2024 395 as is currently stated.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we will open the floor for deliberation. What do we think? Mr. Needham Curtis.
I'm a little bit confused. So are you saying that? For example. Garage sale signs that are put into the ground. Outside a house, they would have to be pulled up. At a certain time of the day. Is that what we're saying? I'm really just very confused, I guess.
So that would remove all the timeframes currently that are restricted. So. There's a two to five downtown, but there's those other hours. And I can give you the code section here, second.
It's exhibit. Um, proposed code amendment, exhibit A. And you're going to go to page two?
Yep, section. B. It's correct. 15. Four, three, five, one, 10, section D. Is where those hours are limited. So this would. Eliminate those hours. And those other zones other than the commercial. Downtown. Does that answer your question or?
No, I'm still a bit confused. So are we just saying that the signs would have to be pulled up from downtown during, when the business closes? But I guess, and so that piece I understand. But are we also saying that within the different residential areas, if we put different signs up? Whether they be political signs or. Garage sale signs. That those would have to be pulled up during certain hours or? No, okay. That was my question. Mike says no.
So, so correct me if I'm wrong, it only applies to signs that are in the public right of way. Correct. So, so, so say you got, say you got your driveway, I'm, I'm sorry. So say you got your front yard and you got the sidewalk, then you got. A planter strip, then you got the street. So anything that planter strip's got to come up, but you can't have it in your front yard because it's your front yard, you know, for however long you want.
So Commissioner Dale Solcher, that with the, with the proposed code language. That would change the public right of way to not have those restricted hours for those portable signs.
Correct, but there's still the, the restriction there of four days, which I believe is what she's referring to.
That would be correct.
Yeah, right. Clear, clear, clear as mud, clear as mud. Yeah, right.
No, I fully understand it now.
So, so when Mr. Suppy said that there's lots of meetings, now you're understanding why. Okay, any, any further questions or discussion, Mr.? Oh, okay, okay. Okay, so it's, so just looking over and what Officer Aronin said and what staff has done, it looks like some, just some. Cleanup on a few things. I don't think it's going to be anything too earth shattering myself, but. If anybody disagrees, speak now. Okay, if they have a motion. Commissioner Wright?
What are you picking on me for? I like that. My computer just froze and that's one I actually did not have written down. Wonderful. All right. All right, Commissioner Wright. A move to approve DCA 24 dash zero, 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 one. Code, sign code amendments. For. Planning Commission meeting of July 11th, 2024.
Yeah, motions, I have a second.
A second.
I have a second for Commissioner Quinn and can we get a roll call vote, please?
Laney Quinn, yes. Jason Dale.
Yes.
Abby Sights, yes. Randy Rickert.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Jose Villapando?
Yes.
Lyndon Newton Curtis?
Yes.
Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Uh, thank, thank you gentlemen for your time. Uh, just want to move on to items from staff.
Right. So thank you commissioners and welcome to our new commissioners. Also wanted to take a moment right before this meeting and part of the reason I was hustling in here right at the last minute is we have a new city councillor that's just joined the city. And that's City Councilor Glenn Cloyde who's here tonight. And so he's also been appointed as the planning commissioner's new liaison. So he's here, which is why we made him sit outside during the quasi judicial item, but let him back in for legislative items. So he may, he may have things to contribute or things to take from this body back to the other body. So we've talked a little bit about his role, the initial orientation with him, but hopefully we get to see him at more. Commission hearings. Some of the things that were shared with you in this packet had to do with some of our upcoming items. So we do have. I think that our, our one item that's noted for the forward looking calendar for August is probably not, is probably going to get bumped till September. So we think that's, it's tentative whether or not we'll have anything in August. So we'll see. So you might have another play month. So just, you know, take it as you can. The, in September, we're still hoping to go and bring forward the craft industrial, which we're, we're switching to that name. So we don't confuse some of the other names that you've heard in the past. But that's the one with the new zoning district designation that would be for the area just west of downtown. And so that's something that we'll be bringing to your, your body hopefully in September. And then we'll have some code maintenance stuff, which, which what we did tonight is very similar. We're hoping to do that as one single package. And Scott Siegel, our new community development director is actually leading that code maintenance package. Because we're expecting that to hit a number of topics, it's really a cleanup, but across a number of areas. We're hoping to do a work session first and then a hearing the following month. So the first one will be more open ended, talking about what we're getting into. And sharing some of those preliminary thoughts and hoping to get feedback on those. And then we've got just kind of the, the lineup that you see for the rest of those on the upcoming anticipated schedule. But then in addition to that, I sent out a memo on July 2nd that was just a few other things we have coming up. One of the items, and I'd kind of like to ask for. Two, now there are, are there seven, how many, do we have a, we have a full set, we have eight? So I would be interested in two or three volunteers if interested. In the first item that's mentioned in this memo, which is the planning commissioner input requested for staff reports, streamlining and restructuring. And so first I'll say that, one, any of you can send me any comments you have whenever you feel like it. What we're doing is we're looking at the way that we write staff reports. And we're trying to think of how can we make them better for the way that staff reads so that staff can do something that it flows and gets produced more effectively. But also how we can communicate more effectively with our recipients. And that could be with our commissioners, that could be with the public. That could be with applicants when they come forward. So we're going to be reaching out to a few different folks. So we'll also be asking to speak with a couple of city councillors, but I was wondering if there's any particularly interested. Commissioners who have opinions about our staff reports and thinks that it might be worth taking a crack at it. If you feel like they are painful and could be less painful. Then you might be the right fit. So I would ask. Is anyone at this commission, since we've got such a good turnout tonight, is anyone particularly interested in helping with something like that if we have something like a focus group meeting? Or something like that?
Commissioner Wright, I'd be interested in that.
So I hear Commissioner Wright, I hear Quinn. What we could do is I would be happy to take those two volunteers and if anyone feels like. They want to be involved and then I've got one more space and you can reach out to me separately. But just give it some thought. It's something that we want it to be better for the public. We want it to be something that the public can read, that it's accessible, that it communicates what we're doing. And that we think about some ways to do that better. And that, and that could take a number of forms. We've got some ideas internally on what we think that could look like. It also might turn out, maybe we're doing it the absolute best way possible now. I don't really believe that. But it's, it's possible that, you know, we're, we're doing an admirable job now, but we think it's worth taking a look at and thinking about it from kind of a customer service perspective. So that's why this is on here. Some of the other things we put in here, we, we recently had a presentation to city council about the Newburgh Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And in the next city council meeting, we'll have the construction excise tax fund. So those were recommendations. Affordable Housing Commission already saw, they recommended an award associated with the Newburgh Affordable Housing Trust Fund that was approved by the city council. Who was final decision making authority. And then the construction excise tax fund is a significantly larger. Set of funds and those awards are also being recommended. From the Affordable Housing Commission and then the city council has final decision making authority. We're also going to be asking the city council to let us know. What they want to do for a second round of funding because there are funds still available in that CET fund. So we just want to know a little more about when do they expect us to do it? Is there something, any specific parameters that we're supposed to work with with this other one? Partially because the CET fund, because that fund has been sunset, there's no additional funds going into it. So it's effectively. A, a one time fund that once we spend it down, it's probably gone. So that's what we're anticipating. Some of the other things we are still working on, the, the sequential urban growth boundary project. Council will be going again. Some council heard it. Had some thoughts associated with our housing needs analysis, our economic opportunities analysis. And our public semi-public reports. So those are the analysis documents that go into a sequential urban growth boundary project. And they asked us to check with the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And see what our opportunities were to modify our existing scope of work agreement that we have with them. If it's possible for us to make modifications to it, including carrying it down. We do adopt the housing analysis, but lead with just the economic opportunities analysis. And do an urban growth boundary member that focuses on employment lands rather than housing and employment. So those are the sorts of things that we're investigating based on that direction from city council. We're expecting to go back. I'm looking at James because he's working on this closely now. I can't remember if, if we have a date when we tentatively think we go to.
August 19th.
So August 19th. But that's tentative. So we'll see if, if we land there, but that's our hope. Thank you, James. Mentioned the code maintenance updates and one of the other things we request from one of our commissioners to post our, our adopted work plan on the website. So we've mentioned it in, off and on a couple of times here, but we have a, a work plan that the planning divisions presented to city council to make sure that we knew what their priorities for us to work. To make sure that we knew what their priorities for us to work on were. So we're working our way through that, and so we've got a couple of items that we've put in the planning, um, in the planning website. And I believe the, the items in your memo that are blue and, and underlined, they should be linked, so you should be able to just click on it and open those up. But it includes the, the plan itself. Um, which is kind of in a tabular format, and then, um, kind of the work plan descriptions and status. That was initially went in January and then we were kind of doing kind of a Gantt chart or dashboard on where we're moving along with those sorts of things. So if you want to see what we're actively working on, what things are kind of still in the queue and maybe we haven't initiated yet, you can have a look at those and those are all available. So that was something one of the planning, or one of the city councillors had, had noticed and thought that if we were working on stuff, we could communicate with that with the public, we should. So I just wanted to mention that. And that's what I've got from staff, um, because of. Uh, Fay's got an item and I was going to turn to Jeremiah and James to see if there's anything they wanted to mention.
I just wanted to say that we are, um, no longer using an agenda packet, uh, publication software. So the way you got your agenda to this round is the way it's going to be. Uh, slightly different, but hopefully still easy to use, feedback's good. It's manual now, so. And also, um, we have a new transcriber. And that's why the minutes look different also, they're a more condensed, more of a action item minutes. And it, which is for the new people you don't know, but usually it was more detailed, uh, minutes. So that, I just wanted to say that's why they look different and they're like, here are like two pages, what? There was, there used to be eight. So I just wanted to just do a quick heads up about that.
Thanks Fay.
It's our Effort and Paper Reduction Act.
I think, one thing just to put on your calendars as well is the enterprise zone is proposed to be redesignated August fifth. So that's an incentive program for people to invest in. Couple users recently. Council will be considering redesignating, um, because it expired in June, so that'll be coming up in August also in the city council.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, and that's everything from staff.
Okay, thanks. Okay, moving on, uh, to items from commissioners. Does anybody have anything? So with the two new people, as is tradition, uh, what we, we like to do is, uh. Go around and introduce yourself, then each one of us will, will say something about ourselves and kind of get to know each other. Mind starting, since you're kind of on that side of the room, you drew the, you drew the short, short straw.
Short straw, okay. My name is Randy Rickert. In this community, Newburgh, for a, a long time, uh, over forty years. At one point in time, I moved away, college and, and came back, raised a family, so been here a long time. My parents were raised here, my grandparents were raised here. Um, I, I love, I love the community of Newburgh and, and wanted to, uh, join a, a commission to, to kind of give back to my community. Um, so last, last year. Commission and, and now I'm, I'm here with you guys too, so, um, enjoying my time on the Affordable Housing Commission. I look forward to.
And, and what do you, what do you do for work, what kind of business do you have or?
Oh, sure, I work in senior living.
Okay.
So I work for a company that is headquartered out of McMinnville. And, um, we develop, own and operate senior living communities throughout the state of Oregon and. Washington.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, I'm Mike Griffiths, I've been on this. I guess it would be two, I don't know, it's like two years or something. Um, locally, I'm retired, uh, I was the CEO of Lifelight, uh, for fourteen years. So I'm kind of retired, but, uh, and Old Town Bar and Grill, as well as the Blue Moon in McMinnville and Wildwood Cafe. And I still work occasionally at a hospital.
So I'm Jason Dale, I've been on the commission since two thousand twelve, the great beard to show for it now too. Uh, so, uh, uh, my family owns Sportsman Air Park here in town. And we've been there since, so established nineteen forty-six, my grandparents were from Dayton for that and. And Eastern Oregon for that on the other, my, my dad's side, and so I've been around and. And yeah, it's, uh, so, something, somebody said to me, I forget where, but if, if you're not involved with this kind of things, then. Other people are, you don't know what they want to do, so get involved, at least you got something to say about it.
My name's Linda, uh, you could be up from England originally. Well, I've lived in Newburgh since ninety-one. Um. Yeah, I've been on the commission for two years, started at the same time as Mike. Work, uh, full time, I do research, looking at different interventions that are working or not working. In child welfare.
Um, hi, I'm Jose Villapando. Been here in Newburgh for four years now. I came here like twenty years ago. And then decided to move here, because it was, I liked it a lot, my family lived here for forty years. And I'm a general contractor now, I do commercial and residential. So I'm into all the codes, all that stuff and when I was. I think it was the mayor told me I was interested in coming, I was like, yeah, why not? You know, like him, I want to know what's going on with my community and see if I can say something or help.
Mayor Ross, yeah. So where were you before Newburgh?
Uh, I live in California.
We'll try not to hold that against you. Thank you, bye.
Like it here. Thanks for having me.
Chris, do you want to jump in real quick, actually?
Sure. I'm Chris Wright, I've been honored to be a planning commissioner since twenty nineteen. I went to Portland State University for twelve and a half years and I'm an atmospheric research scientist. Um, with a background in five branches of science and I have a passion for planning. To help lower the carbon footprint while decreasing taxes for our constituents in the area. Um, keeping the cost lowered for our families while, uh, taking into consideration our growth. And I love the city of Newburgh and I want to really welcome you, uh, Randy Rickert and Jose Villapando. As well as our, uh, commissioner that's also joining us. Thank you for your service to the city, I, I appreciate you joining, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Laney Quinn, despite the fact that it looks like me. Um, I'm born and raised Oregonian, I'm pretty sure we're called unicorns, because you don't see them in the wild. Um, I moved to Newburgh probably six or seven years ago, started a family, but like I said, I've been from Oregon, um, forever, so. Um, studied at Portland State as well, I've been in wine for the last ten years. I recently made a change and I'm looking to get more into the private sector, I will not necessarily be in wine in the immediate future. Given a very recent change I've made for myself. And, um, really like the town and want, Jason, I think you put that really well, I like that you can get involved in either. Complain from the sidelines or try and get into the thick of it, and I'm working to do that a little bit more. Um, like I said, I've been here about eight years, have a five year old, just turned five, and I think I'm in like eighteen years with my husband, oddly enough. Long time, but really happy here in Newburgh.
Thank you.
Um, I'm Abby Seitz, I'm the student commissioner, um, I'm now junior in high school. Uh, I've. I don't know how long I've been on the commission. I don't know, a few months, yeah, so. I love cross country and sports and I've lived in Newburgh my whole life, so. Yeah, and my mom's Fay Bates, so.
And we'll try not to hold that against you, so.
Chair, could I make a suggestion?
Please.
Uh, we've got the commission's new liaison here, if you want to.
Yes, that's, that's a great idea. Oh, and I was, I was going to say, I cannot see your light from here because, uh, of stuff. And so if you have something you want to add at some point in the future, just, you know, start, start making smoke signals or something, so.
Start flailing, yeah.
Yeah, oh, uh, the international sign for, for, uh, was that from Team, Team America?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm Lynn Cloyde, um, I was, uh, born in Medford, but, uh, after two weeks I was adopted. And, uh, I actually attended church in the thrift shop when that was a church back in nineteen sixty-seven, believe it or not. And, uh, worked at the mill for about twenty years almost. And, uh, now that's the big parking lot out there now, so. Um, I've, uh, been around here for, oh, close to fifty years, spent a little time in the dowels. And then, uh, worked out at Camp Yamhill as a maintenance manager out there. So, um, I've been around here, I'm currently working with a lot of nuts. I'm in the hazelnut business, working with, uh, a lot of, uh, I do a lot of hazelnut sorting, let's put it that way, so. Um, but, uh, pointed recently to the, uh, for District Three, Molly's position. And, uh, just take it easy on me, okay, I'm learning.
Alright, thank you. Alright, thank, thank you all for indulging everybody, we've done a little introduction and it's always nice to get to know each other a little bit. And if nobody has anything else. We were adjourned.
Oh, Commissioner Dale, hold on.
Sorry.
Um, other items from commissioners. Staff. Um, since we have a very thin August. Um, I was wondering, since we're doing all the code stuff, the other items from commissioners that you have listed in number five. Um, we, we might want to take consider of G, the C-three zone. Reduce yard, yard frontage landscaping from ten to five. L, the zoning use table. P fifteen point four oh five point zero three zero B, the creation of lots under fifteen hundred square foot. Q fifteen point three oh two point zero one zero, add R four to the list. And V ADUs in the industrial zones. Um, and this may avoid issues in the future that may come up before staff, this commission or city council.
Okay, uh, Chris, we're having a pretty difficulty time hearing you, so I'll, I'll pass all that to Clay in an email or something, maybe?
I sure will.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, so, read adjournment.